Welcome, everyone. It is now six o'clock, so we will go ahead and get started with our public session. Welcome to anyone, everybody watching, at this July twenty first meeting of the Franklin School Board. We'll start with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Colleen slash Stacy, have the meetings been posted as required?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Move on to number four, public participation. There are no members of the public here, so we will kinda gloss right over that one. And go on to item number five, the approval of prior board minutes. We have our regular meeting on June twenty third. We have two non-public sessions, which are currently sealed for June twenty third as well.
I make a motion to approve the June twenty third public minutes, as well as the non-public minutes from five thirty-five and seven forty-two, to remain sealed.
Okay, motion made by Mike.
Second.
Seconded by Kayla. Any questions or discussion? All right, uh, roll call vote, please.
Jane Cody.
Epstein. That wasn't present.
Uh, Liz Cody.
Yes.
Marie Danforth.
Yes.
Leanne Feigfield.
Epstein.
Uh, Michael Lombardo.
Yes.
Ruth Magina.
Yes.
Kayla Morse.
Yes.
By the skin of our teeth, okay.
Sorry.
No, no worries. Okay, our minutes are approved, and then our polls out will remain sealed. And we'll go on to item number six, our financial report with Jefferson.
All right, so, um, since we don't typically normally have a July meeting, I don't usually prepare financial reports this early. We're still deep in our reconciliation period, so, um, I will not have any full information to you till the August meeting, which, uh, be when they hope to have everything prepared for submission to the state, so there is no significant financial update at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
May I ask, uh, is there any, is there any update with some of this holdback of federal grant fundings?
Several states have sued, and it's really in legislative hands at this point to see what happens. Um, the commissioner did send out a letter just letting us know that that's what was going on. I don't believe New Hampshire is one of the states that is suing, because, because New Hampshire doesn't tend to sue the federal administration on any of these things. So, um, it's just kind of a wait-and-see situation. These are certain funds that won't significantly affect us this coming year. Um, we are fortunately in a position where somewhere like Title II, well, most of the grants that we get are twenty-four month grants. So, we are using this upcoming year Title II funds and Title IV funds for FY twenty-six, because they don't expire until, um, September of twenty-six. The funds that are being held up would be come available to us and then would continue to be available until September twenty-seven. So, um, all of the things that we had budgeted for and planned for, uh, we were already covered with those things. The only one that could possibly affect anything is the Title IV-B, which is Twenty-First Century Grant. And that is funds that comes through us that is, helps the after-school programs from the Franklin Rec Center. Um, they did get a chunk of money to cover this current summer, um, but anything during the school year could be challenged depending on what happens with that. So, it's a wait-and-see scenario, um, because we also know certain positions within the state themselves. The people that are employed at the Department of Education, their jobs could be in potential jeopardy also. So, with the lack of these funds being available. So, we're in a holding pattern with that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Jefferson? Thank you. All right, on to item number seven, new business with Superintendent Legallo.
Right, so some couple of personnel items. Uh, we have a resignation tonight of Kate Evans, middle school woodshop industrial arts teacher. So I'll need a motion for that.
So moved.
Motion made by Michael. Seconded by Kayla. Uh, I don't, we don't need any questions or discussion, roll call vote, please.
Jane Cody.
Yes.
Liz Cody.
Yes.
Marie Danforth.
Yes.
Leanne Feigfield.
Yes.
Michael Lombardo.
Yes.
Ruth Magina.
Yes.
Kayla Morse.
Yes.
Okay.
And then I'm pleased to nominate Claire Murray to you tonight, Franklin Middle School math teacher for grades six and seven.
Make a motion, we accept her, the recommendation for being appointed to be a middle school teacher.
Second. Motion made by Jane, seconded by Leanne, roll call vote, please.
Jane Cody.
Yes.
Liz Cody.
Yes.
Uh, Marie Danforth.
Yes.
Leanne Feigfield.
Yes.
Michael Lombardo.
Yes.
Ruth Magina.
Yes.
Kayla Morse.
Yes.
All right, and I forgot to say we accept Kate Evans' resignation with regret, and we can celebrate Claire Murray's nomination. Thank you, everybody.
All right, and then last up is our literacy program approval. Jewel's been working on this for a long, long time. Um, you know, what the hope would be to, to, uh, present the financial portion, portion of this tonight and have the board approve this tonight so we can move forward with ordering. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jewel and let her share all that info with you.
Um, so a lot of this I talked about at the last board meeting, so, um, I'm not sure if people have questions and things. The only thing that I didn't talk about at the last board meeting was the financial piece, because I was still waiting for a quote from CK, CKLA, which we have now received, and I did put that quote in the drive. Um, I also put a website for CKLA in case anybody wanted to look at it. Um, and I put this in a cup last week, so I'm trying to think what else I put in there. Um, I did also put in some other information, just some facts, um, some reasons why, some quotes from the staff, um, because this was a year-long process with a literacy team made up of, um, the administrators from Paul Smith and the middle school, and then, um, teachers from both buildings. Um, and we had reps come in, we had teachers work with some of the materials from various programs. We had some teachers go out to other districts and look at the programs being taught. And the final unanimous decision from the literacy team was to go with CKLA, which meets the new legal requirements of the literacy law that the DOE has, uh, put forward, which doesn't go into effect for another year, but we're trying to be proactive, um, because our staff have requested that we do a soft, slow launch, and give them time to work with the program throughout the year and not expect full implementation until the following school year, which is actually when the law actually takes place. Um, so we're trying to be a little proactive for their sake, um, so they don't have to scramble to become fully implemented right off the bat. Um, I did apply for a grant through the DOE, but the grant was more based on administration and leadership, so unfortunately, we didn't get it. Um, they also said that that particular grant could not supplant curriculum, which I wanted to turn around and say, well, you're the ones that said we needed new curriculum, so I don't know what I'm supplanting, but whatever. Um, so unfortunately, we didn't get that, but I'm looking for other resources as well. Although I will say, having just implemented a new math program a couple of years ago, Dan and I were both surprised at the price tag on this particular program, which does go K to eight, um, because the math program was almost twice as much as this. So I don't know if there's other questions that I can answer. Um, obviously, um, Jefferson and Dan and I would have to work on where this is coming from, but most likely would be grant money. So, um, I don't know if there's anything else people have questions on.
Wasn't the CSI grant come out at all?
It certainly could, I would think, it's just a matter of looking at what money is available where, and we haven't, because until the board approves it, we haven't really sat down to look at where it's.
Yeah, our, our, our intent would be to use the Title I funds, that's where we earmarked, Marie. Um, the CSI funds, we're still waiting to hear our allocation for that.
Okay.
Um, but we built that into our budget for personnel and some other things. So once we know the allocation, then, but, you know, we have several different funding sources that we can consider. But Title I is typically the, the funding, the federal funding source we would use for this, for the, uh, for the program adoption. So, that's, that would be our first, uh, our first option, I guess.
Okay. Do we, what sort of timelines are we operating with saying yes and then securing funding? And if we end up not, what kind of contingency plans and timelines are we working with for if we are like, yes, go forward with it, and then for some reason we aren't able to find the money? Or like what timelines are we working with for those?
So we will find the money in the grant. Usually it takes a month, about a month for us to apply, you know, get approval through the grant process, and then we can order all the things that we need. So, you know, assuming that you approve this tonight, we would work on the grant language in the next couple of days here while we're all still here this week. And then it takes about a month for that process to go through. Jewel has already been working on the order in terms of what we would need to be purchasing and stuff, so that would be done quickly as soon as we got the grant approval, uh, which would obviously come through Jefferson, so that's kind of the timeline, Liz, that we'd be looking at. But then Jewel, like Jewel said, we're looking at a soft launch where, you know, we're not looking for full implementation on September second, the first day of school. Clearly, it's, it's, it's a softer approach to implementation, so.
Um, I just am curious, I see that the licensing is for a year, but we're not paying for it, because it looks like we get discounted on those. Is, do we have to update that every year?
The online fees, yes.
The online fees.
And any consumables.
And do you expect that after this year, maybe they'll charge for that, or do you think every year they'll give us a, a discount?
It depends what else we have to order. Um, uh, for example, with math, um, we have to pay for the online licensing every year, but it's a really, really small fee. Like if you look at the online lights, licensing package here for like grade eight, um, actually for almost all of them, the one-year license. Um, well, it's a little more than math, but math, the online license is like two thousand dollars to cover K to eight, and then it depends on whatever consumables. So it's hard to say, because until I would know what we would have to reorder from any of the other pieces, I wouldn't be able to know if they're gonna, I mean, I can certainly ask them and say, what kind of long-term discounts can you offer? But I haven't gotten that far yet.
And you like this program?
I like this program and the other one we looked at, but I'm really going with, in my mind, the experts. Um, you know, I taught high school English for twenty-six years, so I can analyze Shakespeare like nobody's business. But this is teaching kids to read, which I am not an expert in, so I worked with the reps and the teachers, and I really value their expertise and feeling about what they felt would be best for the kids they're working with. And this, and this isn't where they started, they started with a totally different program. But through the year, and we literally spent all year doing this work, they came back to this and they were all, the whole team was unanimous. And then I think I put the number in there, we did a survey of the district, and I think it was eighty-three percent of all the staff said that this was the one that they prefer.
Thank you.
I do know that I did a little bit of research on that curriculum, and I'm really happy with the choice.
Go ahead.
Other questions or comments?
Bless you.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we would need a motion to, uh, accept the program.
I make a motion to accept this program.
All right, motion made by Leanne, seconded by Marie, any questions, discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Jane Cody.
Yes.
Liz Cody.
Yes.
Marie Danforth.
Yes.
Leanne Feigfield.
Yes.
Michael Lombardo.
Yes.
Ruth Magina.
Yes.
Kayla Morse.
Yes.
All right, motion passes, literacy program.
Thank you very much, we'll get moving on that. And that is pretty much all I have for tonight. We have a late item, and then we'll talk, a couple of late items we'll talk about in a few minutes.
It should only be a few minutes, um, we'll go.
I have a child still here, do you want to go check?
Um, so we'll move on to item eight, policy. Um, I'll give a quick overview, and then we'll need, um, three separate motions for the policies. So first, we have, um, a policy that we do not currently have, but is, um, priority slash required by the state. So, um, per NHSBA, we need to fast-track it, because it is legally required, and we don't actually currently have one. Um, so that's why that one is being fast-tracked, um, not to just bypass the second read and adopt it. We have a couple of first reads that are coming from the spring legislative update. And then additionally, the spring legislative update, there were several withdrawals. Um, mo, these were, um, worked into other policies, so they're just no longer relevant. And so we need to withdraw them per the NHSBA. So that's kind of what we're dealing with, with those three categories.
So you need a motion?
Yeah.
And do they have to be separate?
Yeah, yep, we'll need a motion for the, the fast-track, a motion for the first, and a motion for the withdrawals.
All right, so I'll make a motion for the first and second read fast-track for J L C K, physical and emotional well-being of students.
All right, motion made by Leanne.
Second.
Seconded by Jane, any questions or discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Liz, excuse me, Jane Cody.
Yes.
Liz Cody.
Yes.
Marie Danforth.
Yes.
Leanne Feigfield.
Yes.
Michael Lombardo.
Yes.
Ruth Magina.
Yes.
Kayla Morse.
Yes.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Uh, all right, I'll make a motion for the first read of IJ, which is instructional resources and instructional resources plan, IKFG, career exploration readiness pathways and credentials, and JG, assignment of students to classes.
All right, motion made by Leanne.
Second.
Seconded by Jane, questions or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jane Cody.
Yes.
Liz Cody.
Yes.
Marie Danforth.
Yes.
Leanne Feigfield.
Yes.
Uh, Michael Lombardo.
Yes.
Ruth Magina.
Yes.
Kayla Morse.
Yes.
All right, and last but not least, withdrawals, uh, per the NHSBA, IKAA interdisciplinary credit, IKFA early graduation, and ILBAA high school competency assessments.
There's one more in the second, on the next page.
Oh, sorry, IMBC alternative credit opinions.
All right, thank you, motion made by Leanne.
Sorry, options.
Second.
Seconded by Jane, any questions or discussions on those? All right, roll call vote, please.
Uh, it's, uh, Jane Cody.
Yes.
Liz Cody.
Yes.
Marie Danforth.
Yes.
Leanne Feigfield.
Yes.
Michael Lombardo.
Yes.
Ruth Magina.
Yes.
Kayla Morse.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That takes care of our policy. Uh, so we'll see some of those second reads, uh, next month, and we will have more first reads as we continue to go through the spring legislative update. And, well, we can't quite get away from policy, we have, um, late items. Ooh, we're gonna start with, we'll start with, we got a letter today, and it is from one of our scholarship recipients.
Oh, very nice.
Very nice, so I would like to, I'll read this out. And so this was addressed to the Franklin School Board, care of the Scholarship Committee, so. Says, "Dear Committee, I want to extend my deepest gratitude for your generous support through the Franklin School Board Scholarship. Being selected for this scholarship means more than words can express. It has not only helped ease the financial burden of college, but has also inspired me to work even harder for my academic and personal goals. Thanks to your generosity, I'm able to focus on my studies and take full advantage of the opportunities college offers. Your investment in my future truly makes a difference, and I am incredibly, incredibly honored and thankful. Sincerely, Kaia Roper, Colby Sawyer College, class of twenty twenty-nine."
Nice.
Very nice.
So, thank you, Kaia, yes, very nice, thank you, Kaia. So, we received that, so, most important late item, but now we have a policy.
So, you, you probably have heard about the legislation and the governor signing off on the cell phone ban. Uh, the bell-to-bell ban is what it's being called. So NHSBA has put out a proposed policy, uh, which I have given to you all to take a look at. Um, wanted you to have a chance to look at it. We, we need to pass a policy before school starts. Um, Policy Committee will be looking at this at their policy meeting in August. Um, but Jewel, we'll have to fast-track this at the August twenty-fifth, I think it's, uh, meeting, the August twenty-fifth meeting. Um, reading this policy, it's very, very restrictive, more so, I believe, than what the law requires. So I actually had a conversation with Jack about this, uh, earlier today, because I knew he, uh, wasn't gonna be here tonight. Um, there is, there is room for us to move in this particular policy. So I don't know, and, and, and we don't have to have the discussion tonight, but I wanted you to at least get a sense that this is what NHSBA is putting out. Uh, I, I don't know why they, they got as restrictive as they did, and maybe, maybe you might wanna be that restrictive, I don't know. Um, I've been working with the admin team before this came out, trying to get ahead of it. Um, but this is much more restrictive than what we were anticipating, uh, based on our review of the language of the law. Uh, so wanted you to start to get a sense of where NHSBA is coming from. Um, but preparing for a conversation, obviously, August twenty-fifth, and I'm sure Policy Committee will have quite the conversation about this, um, and come, and come with some suggestions for sure. But, you know, having not really had any conversation with, with the board about this issue, um, I mean, I, I agree that we need to restrict cellphone use, there's no doubt in my mind about that. But I don't know that we need to restrict it to the point of what this particular policy is saying. I, I, that is not my interpretation of law, so I don't, but I don't know where you, you all stand on this either, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is it, um, end note three, April first is the suggested date, do we have end note April to finalize a policy, or no?
I, that, I have to check on that, Jane, I guess. I mean, it, it says, the, the, the legislation says it, it goes into effect sixty days after passage. So the governor signed off on this, so my interpretation is we need a policy for the fall.
Yeah.
Uh, which, we need a policy anyways, even if there wasn't gonna be legislation, we were gonna work on this anyways.
Yeah.
So, uh, but that's why NHSBA has fast-tracked this policy to us this summer, that they made a special, uh, uh, they did a special thing for us to do this, to get it, to get it out there. What they're saying in the policies is that every, by April third, we need to have some kind of review process of the policy we put in place. It's, it's my interpretation, so.
Yeah, that's my, like, the special note is that it, we should adopt either this, or we should have something adopted and in place. And then for the next year, April first should be the pol, the policy provision date, if we're gonna make provisions.
That's all I read it to.
Yeah.
I have a question. The, the language of the legislation and its intent, was it mostly to cut back on distraction in the classroom? Was that the stated goal?
Great question.
Yeah, reduce distractions, yeah.
Okay, my, so my understanding, and I could, I could have read this wrong, my understanding was that the legislation existed to force our hand to have a policy, not necessarily to sort of state what that policy had to do or be. Um, my only issue, as I read through this, is that the exceptions are very specific to, uh, like allowed medical use, uh, but'll afford no leeway in case of emergency.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think we're, we, we're gonna get some pushback for sure, but I think something with this strict and this, this, um, I guess, I use the word dramatic, I guess, especially at the high school, like, it's not that dramatic at the middle school, it's failing close to what we do at the middle school. But at the high school, it's dramatically different than what, what, what has happened up to this point. I just think that we're gonna be facing a pretty uphill battle, um, certainly with parents and, and with kids. And, you know, the conversations we're having with administrators is, is, you know, we're gonna get into battles with kids around phones, and then the kids are gonna go off on the administrators or the teachers, and then we're gonna suspend kids, so we're gonna have kids out of school because of cellphone battles. So we're trying to figure out a way to navigate that, uh, at the high school level for sure. But then this came out, and this was even much more restrictive than what we were even thinking about. You know, we were thinking of like a three-strikes-out, you're out policy, and, and ways to not have teachers and kids, um, you know, have relationships go south and all those, those things that can happen, but, um, you know, I, I, this just came out last week. I don't know why they took this route, um, because the law, the, the law doesn't state that it has to be this, uh, heavy-handed, yeah.
Because the law was, could be bell-to-bell from class to class, or it could be bell-to-bell beginning of day, end of day, right?
Yeah.
So, we should be able to make our own policy. Uh, I know this is a long shot, but what are the potentials with the short time that we have of asking parents, trying to get parents on board with us to get a policy that is workable? I mean.
That was, my other thought was, is, is do we try to do some kind of forum or something?
What if, I don't need to cut you off, what if we were to kind of just take this on its face, so it's in place, but then work with the community on a revision that could supplant this in the middle of the school, anytime? This way where we are in compliance, but also actively working with the community.
Bet you'll get some parent involvement done.
Maybe.
Well, yeah, but, yeah, I mean, to me, the most restrictive pieces, if you're gonna say that phones have to be in a bag or a locker or a purse, and can't be on, on a person, I mean, the safety issues that people worry about is, is where parents are gonna push back.
Yeah.
And rightfully, and probably rightfully so, right?
Well, that whole incident you just explained last month, you know, where the, that, that was scary, that whole thought.
So, I mean, I, I, I think that's. That's the dilemma.
I mean, it says, uh, as we turned off in their locker backpack or handbag, not that they can't have that bag on them. It sounds like I think, mm, the consequences and violations, I think, if anything, would be the thing we would wanna touch, because I know, I mean, and maybe make that more appropriate for us. I feel like that is gonna be one of the most contentious pieces.
So like I said, the, the goal tonight was just to make you aware of this. The Policy Committee's gonna deal with this at their meeting in, in August, and they'll bring to you what they propose to be the first iteration of this.
So I guess a question for, especially for those not in, on the Policy Committee, are you all in general in favor of something, not lax, but something?
I think this is too strict. I would, I would opt to revise it prior to the school year.
Okay. Is anybody in, first glance, you're not being held to this, anybody have really loved this and the way this is, this is constructed?
I, I think we're gonna see an uptick in provided medical histories for students.
Yeah.
Looking at some of the ways, um, it can be allowable.
Yeah, and I, I just feel like my first couple of months of school, it's gonna be cellphone meetings with parents, you know, rightfully so for some of them, for sure, right?
And, I mean, as the, I mean, I'm reading, like, it doesn't need any input from students directly impacted by the policy. So, I mean, in order for this to not ruin relationships, like, we may want to start off a certain way and then get student, even get student input for like, hey, this is a law, so we have to do something about this. Help us work, help us with this language of like, what you think is gonna work, because, I mean, our hands are tied to a certain extent. Um.
I think that's fabulous idea. I'd love to see both parent hands, student participation in this. I think that's a crucial.
That's why, you know, what was it at the beginning of the year last year when we were talking about this, when this was not a law yet, I tried to get, I think Zoe was the student rep at that time on the school board, and asked, what is your thoughts on that?
Yeah.
And, you know, being in, in high school, and, and she seemed to be okay with it, except for there were times when there was, uh, access issues, and it was easier to access information on her cellphone then. And in this, it says that if there is a need to access information, the school's gonna provide that. If there is a need to, uh, use the devices for that, it says, if digital devices are used to enhance learning in the classroom, the district is responsible for pri- for providing district-owned devices, so is that something we're prepared to do?
That's the.
We have a laptop, I guess.
Yeah, everybody has.
Okay, alright. I forget, that's what you get in school these days.
I'm pointing with the idea of putting something out to our families and community at the beginning of August to say, FYI, I wanna make you aware of the law that's been passed in New Hampshire, and that the board is, you know, working on our policy for our school district. I mean, we could invite folks to come in on August twenty-fifth at public participation and say.
I think this would be a perfect opportunity to get parent involvement, student involvement, and to put that little hook on our, on our electronic sign out there saying, school board meeting, we'll be discussing this, this new law, please come and tell us your thoughts, I mean, it would be.
Can we do that at the policy meeting? Cause I, I, my only concern is, we're gonna be at the policy committee, and before we get any feedback, we're gonna produce something, and so we're gonna bring something on the twenty-fifth that, not having gotten any feedback, and so like, there's no way we're gonna be able to move forward with that. So maybe, can we invite them to the ninth, the policy meeting on the nineteenth?
Could, no reason, we could.
Um, and we, we'll do like a, um, we'll like make a, we'll make a public.
It's a finance committee meeting tonight, too.
Oh, that's a short meeting, isn't it?
I know, we, we can cancel.
Cancel.
Or reschedule.
Yeah, finance, reschedule finance, I mean, sorry.
If we wanna do, that's, that's a good idea, actually, is to make that into some kind of forum.
No, fine, that's.
That.
Would have to make it tonight, but that's fine, like.
We could, uh, actually, we could split use it, right, we could talk to the parents about the cellphone policy and about
Anything else we wanna talk to the board, right?
The school, school finance.
So we would have to push that to like six, wouldn't we?
We'd have to make it later, yeah.
So you had, your finance committee could take our four, four-thirty spot.
Sure, I mean, I kinda like that, because we have some pressing dates in September.
That works. So we, yeah, yeah.
So swap it, okay.
For four, four P M? Yeah, I don't know, we'll have to check with the lawyers, see if that would work for the law.
We'll have to check with the lawyer. But that way, we can at least, on the twenty-fifth, bring something that, you know, there is an option for.
And then again, it also, uh, adds to the twenty-fifth, if you wanna see what the final policy is, please come and give us your opinion.
Yeah, yeah, knowing we have something in place, but that we can continue working on it, you know, I think that's a good approach, okay. Alright, we'll finalize schedules, uh, but we'll, we'll try to go for that, we'll try to keep everything.
What's the date of that, the nineteenth?
The nineteenth, that's on your student.
We do our retreat on the twentieth, so we'll have something to talk about.
Yes, we do.
Uh.
Four thirty?
It's a Tuesday. I, I'm not gonna be able to before.
We can reschedule finance.
Could you call in, could you call us?
Reschedule finance.
I would be on the road from Hudson, uh, actually, no, I'll be with the kids, I watch the kids.
Okay.
Alright.
It would have to be.
We could do like a tax, we do like a tax change if we're starting.
I mean, I could do the twenty-first, or, but at five.
Should we finance call five to six? Is that enough time?
Or, or the eighteenth, or really any other day.
We'll have to avoid them one day.
The I two, the eight, the six, that six, on the eighteen.
I can do the twenty-first, can you, Liz?
Twenty-first won't work, that's the admin retreat that.
Oh, oh, okay.
I, I don't need, I, I will, I don't, I will not be there.
I two is on the eighteenth?
I don't, I have to meet.
Yes.
Right.
I two is on the eighteenth.
Yeah, we don't have Lori, my, my.
Thanks for telling me.
What about I two?
Yeah, I didn't have it on my calendar.
Oh.
Six o'clock on the eighteenth.
Six o'clock on the eighteenth. Okay, so we'll definitely, if, I mean, we're inconveni- inconveniencing finance, but are you okay with, uh, policy kind of taking over that? And then we'll work on finalizing the finance meeting? Okay, okay, so we'll, we'll shimmy the, shimmy, great, the policy meeting to become more of a forum.
More of a forum, we'll vote cellphone.
For cellphones, what's that?
At six.
Yeah, at six, and then maybe we'll have like a little debrief after, so like, we'll have a public session, six to.
Seven?
If, I don't know how long, and then we'll meet for half an hour to, um, like, break the arm and put together something for the twenty-fifth.
So the policy meeting on the nineteenth will be at six?
Yes.
It'll be more of a forum, and we'll listen to the thousands of people who show up to talk about cellphones with us.
Don't tempt, they're, they're.
I hope they do, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it out there, I'll put it out there and let people know.
I would.
You're sending it to them, you're putting it on.
Cause this is the way we get, we get parent involvement.
We'll put it out there.
It is.
Get them caught up in it.
Um, so then the only, we may wanna do a little contingency plan of, if that goes very late, we need to have language for the twenty-fifth. So we may need to, uh, have another policy meeting.
Forget about.
And I don't know when we would do that, because every other day until I leave is, so.
Yeah, it's, it is.
Figure it out.
I wonder if Lori could like, or someone could, for, for you?
Yeah, I mean, I. Yeah, cause we, we do have four members, so yeah, if, uh, if we wanna do that. Um, and then we may have to operate, if Joel can go and you can't, cause the, the.
Yeah, if we have to do it that way, then.
The twenty-first and twenty, yeah, twenty-first and twenty-second look like viable days. Um, which I could do.
Run concurrent meetings, with finances is one place, and the other ones, and Joel does one and I do the other.
What day?
Whatever, whatever day you decide to, to choose to do.
And I'd love another finance committee meeting scheduled for August, so we can, yeah, to get a text change.
Yeah.
So I just wanna make sure I'm, I have the board retreat on, at, on the twentieth?
Twentieth, yes.
Yeah, yeah. And policy will shoot for like six to eight, with the first half being public, and then the second half being us putting it together.
And then we need to reschedule the finances, so.
Yeah, 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 finance needs to reschedule. And then policy should be thinking, if we have, if we do have to meet again, we'll need to kind of scramble that together, but I think we're good there. Okay.
So in policy, we'll, we'll ha- we'll open it up for all the board members to come, or anyone that wants to be, that would be, yeah, well, that's how we'll frame it, so.
So yeah, in order to meet, we only have like one, one question on the twenty-second, and then have a policy meeting before the board.
Yes. Yep, yes, yes, that is true.
Which I can do myself.
The policy meeting July?
Oh, your policies, we did.
Not, oh, yeah, July second.
We did in July.
Was July second, yeah.
Oh. Hey, you know what?
We did it early.
Legislative update?
Right, remember, you, you, we used to take July off totally, so this is all bonus stuff, this.
Well, the, the legislative updates used to come earlier, this has been a crazy year.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, that is true.
So, we shall see, hey, legislative updates will be there, we're working, we worked through a lot of the legal ones, so, we're doing it, okay. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you for that, that was very helpful.
Yeah, I'm excited about this.
Yeah, me too.
One, one more late item, um, joint city tomorrow, just got canceled.
Joint city tomorrow's canceled.
Joint finance.
And we are gonna suggest to them Tuesday night, next week. I'll be, I'll be.
What date is that?
Tomorrow, which is.
Twenty nine? Twenty nine?
Twenty nine.
Um, how are we communicating, cause I feel like it's our responsibility to communicate this, even though they postponed.
Colleen, can it go on our site?
Yeah, okay.
Um, we had also been trying to rally, um, some teachers and faculty to attend.
Oh, yeah.
True.
Yeah.
Um, I, I mean, I can reach out to people in my personal bubble, um, directly. I don't wanna post anything on Facebook, because I really don't wanna have that be part of my school board.
But I email Karen.
What?
I want to officially email Karen.
Karen.
For our other committee.
Oh.
Yeah?
I think so.
So that she can reach out to staff, you mean?
Just a team diligence, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Would that be okay?
Hmm.
No?
Just slip her a quick note and say, hey, we know some of your people were interested in attending.
I think the better thing is to reach out to Jen.
Okay, no problem.
And tell Jen, and ask Jen to spread the word, that probably makes more sense.
It's a culture.
Yeah.
Um, side note on joint finance committee, I just picked up, um, some collateral that I had printed professionally for the meeting tomorrow.
Nice.
Yeah.
Handouts.
Nice, good.
Gonna be lit, okay. Okay, so we're tentatively, joint finance will be rescheduled for next Tuesday, but we have to run it by.
That's what we're shooting.
Yes, what we're shooting for, hopefully, we'll see if that worked for the city, uh, group and the library. And we will communicate the change on our website, and also get it to the teachers, um, we're gonna work on that.
If the library's not available, can it be here?
Kennedy?
Um, the, they did not want that because of custodial fees and money, I don't know if that is actually an issue. Um, so I think we can, we can push back and explore that, if, if that's the only barrier, for sure. We'll be done with that. Okay.
Is it going to be, um, I'm just curious if we're inviting all of these people to the joint, or encouraging them to attend a joint finance committee meeting, is there going to be an opportunity for others to speak, like a public comment?
It's not on the agenda, and it's more of a workshop, so it hadn't been intended to be public participation.
Okay, well, it was my, then what purpose would they have to be there, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Just to, just to, just to know.
Education's for them to, to, to then go to the full, the full, um, city council meetings that they're also being kind of looked into,
Actual council meeting.
And, and, and speak there in those designated spaces.
Perfect.
Yeah, if it was just our meeting, if it was like, I, I think we could add a public comment, but being a joint, the committee, I think, yeah, with the city.
I'd also, yeah, I'd also say, right, that them being there and getting like the firsthand exposure to what's happening. They have their own networking bubbles, right, that they will then communicate to, like, hey, this is going on, or this is what they're working on, or, you know.
Yeah, that's, I was just curious is whether or not, basically, if they would have an opportunity to speak at all, so.
Yeah, they will have other, at other, at other meetings.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, good question, good question. Are there any other late or other items? Okay. Um, next item is our public participation, seeing no members of the public, uh, we will go ahead and skip by that one. Um, and we do need a second non-public session, um, yes, and we'll save the left.
Did you lose Ruth?
No. Ruth is still here?
Oh, somebody's texting, must be, uh.
Lori?
Lori?
Lori? Oh.
I think Lori's texting.
Oh, okay, my phone is absolute garbage down here, so.
I don't even know why we need a cellphone policy, because.
Somebody's with a cellphone.